For all of our online participants and just as a general advisement, please bear with me as I get through this statement. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission hearings and meetings are open to the public in person and via a Microsoft Teams streaming application. Note that all meeting or hearing information can be found on the Town and Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the Board of Trustees about land use matters in the Town and Monument, and each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review. This includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. Additionally, for those who are attending tonight's public hearing via Teams, if you wish to speak during a public portion, please ensure that you utilize the option to quote "raise your hand" and have your computer microphone ready to turn on. For anyone calling via telephone, they can quote "raise their hand" to speak by hitting star five and to unmute themselves by hitting star six. You can speak directly to the Commission so that your concerns are heard, and to ensure a timely and fair hearing, we ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speaks on that same subject. And given the amount of participation, I will be limiting comments to three minutes per person. Thank you, and this concludes the introduction. We'll begin with the first item on today's agenda, which is our roll call by Planning Staff.
Commissioner Kathy Green. Commissioner Sean Zernico. Commissioner Eric Light.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel Oars.
Oars.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo. Commissioner Trujillo, are you online? I will mark him absent. Vice Chairman Sean White.
Here.
And Chairman Chris Wehelme.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. And if everyone can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you, and I just will remind all of our Commissioners to speak into the microphone, have it on for all of our online virtual participants. Let's go ahead and look at the next item on the agenda, which is a request for approval of the previous Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the January 12th, 2022, and January 26th, 2022 Planning Commission hearing.
Second that motion.
Commissioner Kathy Green. Commissioner Sean Zernico.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Oars.
Yes.
And we'll try one more time. Commissioner Martin Trujillo? Okay, he's absent. And Vice Chairman Sean White?
Yes.
And Chairman Chris Wehelme.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved.
Moving on, we'll open up our public hearings, and let's go to the first item on the list, the Canexus Phases II and III Preliminary PUD Plan. I'll turn to staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Megan Harrington, Town Planning Director. So this evening, for your consideration, is the Canexus Preliminary PUD Plan. The project is located along Old Denver Road. It is approximately 145 acres. It is on the east side of Old Denver Road, west of I-25. And there's been quite a bit of history related to this project and a lot of citizen input. My presentation this evening is going to be a little bit different. Staff would typically give you a very detailed presentation about the project. However, I know this evening that the applicant and their consultant team would like to go into all of the nuances of the project and the specifics. So in order to save time and not be repetitive, staff's presentation is going to focus mainly on the review criteria and the process moving forward as related to staff's recommendation. And then if there are any questions after the applicant's presentation that you have for staff related to our finding on a particular element of the plan or topic, please do ask staff. But in interest of time, I'm kind of going to breeze through a little bit of this here. The property was rezoned from PID, Planned Industrial, to PD, Planned Development, with a sketch plan in August/September timeframe of 2020. Now, I say PD because we are working between land development codes. On July 16th of 2021, the town adopted the new land development code. Anything that had been submitted prior to that was PUD but referenced as PD, and then after July 16th, that nomenclature changed to PUD. And so when we're kind of going back and forth, the PD and the PUD are the same, but the names had changed. In June of 2021, a preliminary and final PD site plan had been submitted, and that was a plan that was an industrial development for the approximately 145 acres. That was submitted to staff. Staff issued one review letter. As you know, the application is submitted, we send the plans and studies to review agencies, combine all of the comments, and send the applicant a review letter as part of the process. We had issued one review letter, and that's about as far as we had gotten. There was significant emails and comments of citizens related to opposition of that project. That project had never been scheduled to come before Planning Commission, hadn't been scheduled to come before Board of Trustees. It just, we just weren't that far along in the process. However, I believe that the applicant heard that the citizens were in opposition to this project, and they redirected. And as part of that redirection, in November, a preliminary PUD plan was submitted. Now, it wasn't the preliminary final that was submitted originally. This was, this is just a preliminary PUD plan, and that's what you're reviewing here this evening. Again, submitted in November, we're here at Planning Commission, and then on February 22nd, the Board of Trustees will consider this item along with a Metro District Service Plan. The Metro District is a financing mechanism. That does not come before the Planning Commission, that goes straight to the Board of Trustees. But those two items will be heard at the same hearing on February 22nd. I want to just go over a few code sections that I think are important as we proceed tonight, and as staff reviewed this application, we're looking at Chapter 18 of the Land Development Code related to what the preliminary PUD plan is and the purpose. And there's some language in here that recognizes that change from the code pre-July 16, 2021 to post. If the property had received a sketch PD approval but had not been platted, the property may be developed pursuant to the terms of the original sketch PD approval, provided the owner shall be responsible for obtaining approval of a preliminary and final PUD and a subdivision plat prior to development. And that's where this applicant is today with the preliminary PUD. Under General Procedure, it states that the first step is the preliminary PUD, which must include design guidelines and zoning regulations which constitute the overall zoning and development for the entire property. And then the final step is the final PUD, which are for individual parcels within the larger preliminary PUD, and the director can take in an application that's both a hybrid of a preliminary and a final PUD. Final PUD approval is required prior to any building permits. And so as we move forward and the applications are separated, from a staff perspective, when we're looking at this and we are asked, well, what are the next steps? How do we know what's in this preliminary PUD plan is going to be carried forward? That's where staff relies on the next steps. The final PUD plan needs to be in conformance with the preliminary PUD plan that is adopted. And at that final is when we start looking at more of the technical information of the building locations, what infrastructure is required with that specific phase of development. And at that time, and at the time of subdivision, staff works with an applicant on a public improvement agreement, and that's where we document all of the public improvements that are required for what is specifically being built. So it's, by submitting the preliminary PUD, now we have multiple steps. If development in the future does not, is not consistent with the preliminary PUD, then they can't submit that final PUD or those construction drawings without amending the preliminary PUD. So what we're doing really is, under this new code, it's a two-step process to establish a PUD, a preliminary and a final, whereas because we're between codes, there's almost a three-step process. There is an approved zoning and sketch plan. Now we're working on the preliminary PUD, and then eventually the applicant will move to final PUD, and that could be for one lot, a portion of one lot, it could be for the entire property. That's really dependent on construction, because that looks more like a construction document. Preliminary PUD plan is the preliminary plan stage in the comprehensive review of the development proposal, and then under 1803-450D, Criteria for Review. There are 13 criteria for review and findings to be made in the preliminary PUD. This states the preliminary PUD must adequately address the following criteria: in a manner general, public, interest, health, safety, and welfare. Staff had provided those 13 criteria in your packet. We also printed those out for you this evening, so they are at your seats. If at any time we're discussing a particular item or there's a question, those criteria are there for you to reference. This is a snapshot of the preliminary PUD. The development areas are specific to use type. This takes the sketch plan from what was a little more general and ties the uses in specifically. There's four development areas, multiple open space tracks, detention areas. A big part of this plan that staff worked with the applicant and TRIVU on, as well as the citizens, was the realignment of Old Denver Road. And the applicant will go into this in more detail, but pulling Old Denver Road up through the Canexus property, whereas currently, this is Old Denver Road. The applicant's going to realign Old Denver Road to pull it away from the adjacent single-family residential, and then the remaining section of Old Denver Road adjacent to the residence. When all of this is done, and this section is constructed, staff will work to, I believe we'll need to rename that section of road. It should become a local. Speed limit would likely change. It is functioning as a direct neighborhood access and not as the throughway for Old Denver Road. And again, the applicant's going to speak to you about how that road alignment is going to work in order to make it clear to drivers driving through Old Denver Road that they are to stay on what is Old Denver Road and not what becomes the local roadway. This is a quick screenshot of the land use table from this preliminary, and it varies from the sketch plan in two ways related to land use. The sketch plan stated that there was a maximum residential unit cap at 465 units and a maximum non-residential square footage of 1 million square feet. This preliminary plan is allowing for a maximum residential units of 631, but with that increase in residential units, is decreasing the non-residential square footage to 830,000 square feet. Again, in working with, in working with the citizens, there was definitely an interest in saying, we don't want a lot of industrial and commercial in this area. It appeared the preference was for more residential, and again, the applicant worked with the citizens, staff, and TRIVU to make these changes to that plan. And when I introduced from, from Chapter 18 of the Land Development Code, you know, the purpose of the preliminary PUD, which is to establish those development guidelines, on page two of the preliminary PUD plan, there are significant design guidelines, development guidelines. They include specifying allowed uses, the definition of warehouse and distribution, while maximum height was approved in 2020 as 90 feet. The height has been reduced, and again, we will get more detail on that. There's building design standards, industrial-specific standards related to cross-docking, number of loading areas, outdoor storage, screening setbacks, and landscape buffers between varying When we talk about citizen engagement, we had experience with this project that, in most circumstances, staff will send a postcard or the applicant will send a letter to surrounding property owners of a neighborhood meeting. Often, we can say that we think there's a need for a neighborhood meeting, that we will have the applicant hold a large neighborhood meeting. In this situation, there was so much interest that, you know, staff felt that having a large neighborhood meeting might not be as fruitful as we would hope. And we worked with the adjacent neighborhood to designate about, there's typically 15 to 20 citizens, to represent the neighborhood and pass that information back out to their neighbors. And that citizen group met with the developer and staff three times since November, when the applications were submitted, at the time of submittal, and then when staff prepared after staff sent the first review letter but before resubmittal, and then a meeting recently here, I believe in the last three weeks, because additional changes were made by the applicant to the plans based on additional input from one of those meetings. And as staff has done for a number of months now, all submittals, not just Canexus, but all submittals are posted out to the town website, and that includes the first submittal as well as the resubmittals, the resubmittal letter. So it is a little bit easier for citizens to track what is happening with the application if they go to the Town and Monument website. Comprehensive Plan. One of those 13 criteria, and we'll look at those later in the presentation, is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And this language is directly from the comp plan. I don't want to read it specifically, but I thought it was pretty important. Our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2017 references Colorado Revised Statute 3123-206. The master plan for a municipality shall constitute an advisory document to guide land development decisions unless the plan, or any part of the plan, is made enforceable through the municipality's zoning, subdivision, or other land development regulations. And that's why the town went through the process of updating the zoning code. In 2017, we had a brand-new comprehensive plan. The next logical step is to hire a consultant to rewrite the zoning and subdivision ordinances. The comp plan also talks about the future land use plan as well as adopted policies that are part of that comprehensive plan. First step, property owner wishing to rezone, to zone or rezone their property, should review the future land use map to determine the likelihood of a favorable response. First step is to ensure that a zoning change mirrors the future land use plan. Zoning for this property was approved in 2020, and with that and those findings, conformance with the future land use plan was found. I wasn't here, I can only assume that since that's one of the findings and the zoning was approved, that future land use plan consistency was found. Step two, the request conforms with, when the request conforms with the future land use plan, next step is finding of consistency with Chapter 5 that outlines the objectives of the community, and those are more general policies. We look at the future land use map for the Canexus parcel. The future land use map shows this as Business Campus, which is BC, and there's multiple types of uses, mix of uses, business park, manufacturing, assembly, fabrication, commercial accommodations, those are the types. Attributes and characteristics include intended to provide tax base and jobs, intended to provide alternative to I-25 PID lands. This one's a good one. Unlike mixed-use MU, residential is not allowed. But the sketch plan in the PUD approved in 2020 permitted residential. Now, the findings on the comp plan are consistency. Consistency doesn't mean necessarily every single word within the plan holds true to each project. It is, is there general conformance? Does it substantially comply? And then, structures should be appropriately scaled. Structures should ensure that views to the west are preserved. When staff is reviewing this preliminary PUD request, I mentioned that there are additional residential units as compared to non-residential square footage. In the PUD, staff supports raising the number of residential units with the appropriate decrease of non-residential square footage. In listening to the citizens and surrounding property owners, that's the message that was received, is less non-residential, more residential. And we do feel from staff that that may not meet that one sentence in the BC Business Campus that states no residential, but it meets a majority, and this is definitely not all of the policies, it meets a majority of the policies and the opportunities from the policy framework. Encourage use of sustainable development practices to ensure that views, vistas, dark skies, environmentally sensitive areas are integrated. Encourage transitions between dissimilar land uses. Allow a wider array of land use types. Strengthen design standards to encourage development that's harmonious. All of those policies, a change and allowing additional residential with a decrease in non-residential, I feel that that meets the intent of those policies. Again, I mentioned the preliminary review criteria, kind of splitting these up here, looking at open space, school and park dedication, in this case, fees in lieu of school or park dedications will be paid with building permits. There's open space incorporated into the PUD plan, which the applicant will be discussing with you. A variety of development of housing types, styles, and densities are definitely proposed now. There's multifamily, there's a medium-density residential, commercial, it is a mix of use And then there, we're going to have a lot of discussion about the circulation system, the roadway, connectivity. Oh, it stopped sharing. I'm sorry. We have sharing. Bring that back up. Okay, sorry about that. Eight through 13, there are utility services. The plan design and density are sensitive to the major environmental characteristics. There is Preble's Meadow jumping mouse habitat, it's undisturbed area in tracts. And then, the plan, is the plan consistent with the town's comprehensive plan? Staff made the finding that it is, based on kind of what I outlined quickly for you this evening, is that, yes, there's residential, but it was zoned to allow residential in 2020, and there are a number of policies that do support that residential. With that, with that, staff recommends approval of the preliminary PUD plan for Canexus based on the finding that the proposed preliminary PUD is in conformance. There is a condition of approval, which when you're getting closer to voting, that we will bring up on the screen, there is the condition, and I apologize, I did not put that on my slide, that the final details of the new Santa Fe Regional Trail alignment and proposed crossings of Old Denver Road will be addressed with the final design of the Old Denver Road realignment. That's going to make a lot more sense after the applicant's design team briefs you on everything that's occurring with Old Denver Road, and again, as I said, we will bring that condition up when it's closer to deliberation time. Thank you.
All right, the applicant, I'm not sure if there's any one particular person that's looking to speak. Go ahead.
My name is Brock Chapman. I'm with Shuck Communities. For the record, that's 2 North Cascade Avenue, Suite 1280, and that's Colorado Springs, 80903. Shuck Communities is the member manager of Canexus LLC, and that's the applicant for this proposed preliminary PUD tonight. Real quick, just out of courtesy, I want to go ahead and introduce the rest of our team here tonight. Maybe y'all can just raise your hand here to make it easy. First with Shuck Communities is Steve Shuck, the founder of, over 50 years ago. Next is Mike DeGrant, our Vice President of Development. And then with NES is Andrea Barlow, our planner and clicker extraordinaire here, hopefully. There's weather, I just said that. With LSC Transportation Consultants, we have Kirsten Farren, in case there's any traffic information that comes up or the traffic study. And then our land use legal consultants with Brownstein-Farber-Hayatt are Carolyn White and Angela Hi. While not everyone I just introduced will be presenting here tonight, we will all be available to answer questions by you and/or the staff as well. But we are here tonight to request that you recommend approval of the Canexus Preliminary PUD, which allows a mixed-use development with limited light industrial, commercial, retail, civic, office, residential, parks, and open space uses. As Megan said, tonight's presentation will be quite detailed due to the extensive history of the property, past land use entitlement approvals, most importantly, the evolution of the proposed plan based on engagement and feedback from neighbors and town staff, resulting in what are quite customized development standards that were done directly to address comments, concerns identified throughout the design process and the multiple meetings we've had. The good news is that it is, with this extensive process of neighborhood engagement, we believe it's made this preliminary PUD the best plan it can be while still meeting the interest and rights of all stakeholders. Because this is a detailed plan and we have multiple slides, doing everybody here a favor tonight, we're going to have multiple presenters, so we'll break it up a little bit, and you won't have to listen to just me tonight. So with that, and going through the plan, I'd like to introduce Andrea Barlow with NES to walk you through the background and details. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission, Andrea Barlow, NES. I've been in front of you many times before, and you should be relieved you don't have to listen to me all night, because we are breaking it up. So I'm going to start off by going through the history and how we got to the point we're at today, and then Mike DeGrant from Shuck Communities is going to come up and talk about the actual preliminary plan and all the changes we've made through the stakeholder process. Okay, oh. I just wanted to point out, Megan did a fine job of explaining where the site is. I think everybody knows that by now. It is 100, just short of 146 acres. Just for information, Shuck Communities does also control, and it owns the land to the south of that, which is Canexus Phase 1. That is where the church is located, and there's another parcel just to the north, which is yet to be developed. So they own and all control a large portion of the property in this area. So the zoning history, I'm going to go back quite a ways, because I just want to emphasize how long this has been industrial land. Okay, so this was first identified as industrial land when it was in El Paso County with the Gary Center and Melody Estates Sketch Plan, which was approved in 1981. And the previous landowner, prior to selling to Shuck, had invested in this property in the 80s with the intent of developing it for industrial purposes. the eighties with the intent of developing it for industrial purposes. So this was annexed into the town in 1987. At that point, it was accompanied by the Regency Park Sketch Plan, so it's part of Regency Park, and it was still identified as P I D. We can't really see on the plan very clearly, but there are multiple access points shown along this entire stretch for the industrial of this parcel and all the way down to Baptist Road. There are a total of 13 access points originally planned, with eight planned in this particular stretch for the Canexus two and three. Obviously, that was prior to the agreement that I think you're familiar with by now, with the M O U with El Paso County, which allowed for six access points over the Santa Fe Trail along this stretch, the entire stretch from the north of this property all the way down to Baptist Road. So that's where those kind of got filtered out, and let's think more clearly about where this access should be. But originally, it was planned for far more access points. The ordinance was confirmed, which zoned the property P I D, planned industrial development. So that has been the history of the site for many years, back to the eighties, that it was zoned and proposed for industrial, long before the residential on the west side of Old Denver Road was developed in the early 2000s. So the zoning history was confirmed with the P I D. This is the previous zoning map before this property was rezoned to P D, and before, actually, the zoning map for the town as a whole got restructured with the changes to the zoning code. In September 2020, it was rezoned to P D, as Megan mentioned, and that was subject to a sketch plan, which we will go on to next. So the sketch plan was for the entire property. It divided it into three areas, showed a kind of internal road, three access points identified. We had a maximum building height approved with that sketch plan for 90 feet, which was carrying forward the allowed height in the previous P I D zoning. We identified our setbacks as 50 feet to I twenty-five and 25 feet to Old Denver Road, so they were part of the sketch plan approval. In addition, we had the following uses shown on this slide allowed with that plan. So a range of commercial, civic, light industrial, a multi-use category, residential high-density, residential medium-density, up to a total of a million square feet of non-residential floor space and 465 units of residential. The figures you will see in the right-hand column add up to more than 465. They were considered to be an either-or. The areas were going to either be high-density or medium, and then the maximum was based on the higher density as the maximum allowed in those areas. And this was, these were notes underneath that table, which actually clarified all the different types of uses that were anticipated within the commercial, civic, light industrial. And I just highlighted there, warehousing and distribution was clearly identified on that sketch plan and discussed at the time. So it should come as no surprise that that's part of the project, and that is consistent with the approved sketch plan and zoning. The multi-use was intended to be a mix of uses combined on the same building or lot, slightly different from the town's mixed-use zone, but we identified that as an appropriate use as well, trying to encourage a mix of uses. And then, office and the residential use types, we identified medium-density range of density, and the same for the high-density. So the other aspect of the sketch plan that was approved were the points of access, three points of access, three crossings of Santa Fe Trail, so the principles of those were approved. We always indicated on the sketch plan that the access locations were preliminary and that they could change with further analysis. And the only real improvements that are identified as the immediate need were some turn lanes at those access points. And then, the internal spine road to serve the various parcels. So that was the background. So just to kind of reiterate, the property has been zoned for industrial for a very long time. In 2020, we came forward with sketch plan and zoning, which really reduced the intensity of that zoning considerably. We removed some of the more kind of general heavier industrial uses and provided for more of a mixed-use community and environment, and that was the approach of the sketch plan. So now, I'm going to turn over to Mike DeGrant, who can talk about the proposed preliminary plan and how we got from where we submitted initially in November to where we are today. Do you want to use the clicker yourself?
You are the clicker extraordinaire, right? Good evening, Commissioners. Mike DeGrant, Vice President of Development with Shuck Communities. Thanks for hearing our project tonight. We appreciate your time. So, you know, as Brock mentioned, we think we've got the best plan moving forward for all stakeholders. We've got a mix of uses, which you've heard through Brock and through Andrea. And with that, we're going to go through some changes based on what the original submittal was, working with the neighbors. Neighbors had some very valid points, and we think we, in cooperation with everybody that we've worked with so far, we've got a plan that I think all of us can be proud of. So although the neighborhood meetings are not required by town code with, in connection with any approvals on P U Ds, we did hold three meetings with the focus group or 15 to 20 residents. Really appreciate their input. But we held our first meeting in November, and then we held two additional meetings in January, and then had some additional conversations back and forth with certain members of that group and with staff funneling information to us. So appreciated that input from staff and from the neighbors. So we listened when we heard the neighbors talk. As you know, and let's see, skip on, pass this.
Okay.
Yeah. So this shows our initial submittal, and a little hard to read on the land use chart down below, but on the, back up just a second. But based on what you see, there are various colors which represent the different land uses. So the salmon color to the north being commercial, retail, which has always been on the plan, even back to the sketch plan. And then, the purple being the light industrial area, the more mustard color being the medium-density residential as the buffer with the existing neighborhood. And then, the darker brown being the multifamily parcel, more of the high-density residential. The light blue are detention ponds that will hold all developed flows and release that historic flows based on criteria. And then, the darker green areas are open space areas. So with that, and that submittal, back in November, and let's skip to the land use chart, we came back and proposed 780, I can't see the number, 88 residential units and a million square feet of non-residential uses. That million square feet was on the original sketch plan. So, and then, go back to the sketch plan a little bit. Our building height across the entire property was set at 90 feet for all buildings, for the entire parcel. So we looked at that, evaluated that, and then have since reduced that height limit and understood through comments from the neighbors, which were very valid, that we increased residential per their request. We weren't showing any reductions in the non-residential square footage. So back to the plan again, and what can we refine to change that? There's too much, some of the comments that you see before you, too much semi-traffic impacting the local roads, need for less semis, less loading docks on buildings, more centered around the industrial-type use or the light industrial uses. And so we really centered in on that and worked our way through really reducing that down. Let's skip to the next slide. I'll skip through this fairly quickly. One of the things that, early on in the process, is that the town, with us and the town and Triview Metro District, knew that we needed to do some preliminary design work for Old Denver Road, from Baptist Road to Second Avenue. And the town, working through Triview and joint agreement, basically took the road and bridge fees from the church that were paid to Triview. Triview kept those fees and then hired H R Green to start the preliminary design work of what Old Denver Road will ultimately be. So they're the ones that are really driving the train on that one. But we've gone through numerous scenarios of, you know, how can we handle traffic on existing Old Denver Road? Narrow areas for the right amount of right-of-way in there, major crossings of drainages and things like that. And H R Green came back with a great concept and said, you need to do this. And that was to realign Old Denver Road through this portion of Canexus. And we really evaluated that. Makes all sorts of sense to us, made sense to town staff, city manager, everybody pretty much jumped on board to that and said, let's figure out a way we can make that happen. So with that, we have adjusted the plan that you see now, which was submitted the 10th of January of this year, showing that the realignment of Old Denver Road now comes through Canexus. And as Megan mentioned earlier, the existing portion of Old Denver Road adjacent to the homes on the west side will become a local road. So as she mentioned, reduce speed limits through there, more like a neighborhood of 25 miles an hour type scenario. We're proposing, based on the design of Old Denver Road, that really the speed limit through Canexus will be a 35 mile an hour speed limit. And then, at the crossings of the trails, of Santa Fe Trail, we're going to neck that down to 25 miles an hour for those crossings. So we are moving forward on that. We've got a slide we'll show you here in a minute of how that, the two intersections work coming out of the neighborhood and how they tie into the new Old Denver Road. Think it works for the advantage of everybody. This will eliminate any cut-through traffic into the neighborhood based on the new design. And with that, then, we've also reduced the number of residential units based on this plan and the overall non-residential square footage. So down to 631 acres, or units, I'm sorry, for the high-density and the medium-density residential. And then, we reduced the non-residential square footage to 796,000 square feet. 326 of that is in that salmon-colored area on the map at the north, which is retail, office, hotel uses. And we reduced the area for the light industrial down to 470,000 square feet max. And then, we also looked at the overall building heights and reduced those. So everything that was medium-density residential, more of the mustard color on the map that you saw before you, reduced those down to 50 feet in height from the 90 that was approved. And then, also have reduced office and retail down to, yeah, 75 and then 50 on the retail, 60 feet on the light industrial, and 75 feet on the high-density residential or apartment complexes. And that's to give a little bit of flexibility based on the overall definition of how building heights are measured. So trying to make sure that, you know, typically, you measure from each corner to the top of a building, that's the building height. Well, we want to make sure that we've got enough room, and there's no ambiguity if there's a parking garage underneath a building, that that's also included. And we'll talk a little bit more about building heights, because we've refined those even further than this. So with this plan and the meeting with the neighbors, in principle, the neighborhood group loved the idea of the realignment of Old Denver Road, liked the idea of reducing the crossings of the Santa Fe Trail from three down to two. And we, Megan mentioned earlier, we'll talk a little bit more in detail here in a minute in regards to the El Paso County Parks Department and how that will be designed in those crossings. That's still to come with the final design of the street plan. So we, they liked the reduction of the trail crossings, liked the reduction in the non-residential square footage. They asked for us to look at the industrial one more time. Is there any way we can cut some more ground out of that? And the original plan that was submitted back in last year was for 92 acres. And then, we reduced that down to 41 acres, and we have now reduced that down to 30.8 acres total on light industrial. So, and that's a maximum. With that, we have limited the overall square footage to 395,000 that we talked about. And overall, non-residential square footage is 830,000. That's because we went back, looked at the industrial one more time, we reduced it by 10 more acres from what it was on this plan, and added that to the commercial retail parcel to the north of the industrial. With that, they asked us to look at, can you add an approved use in commercial for high-density residential? So we have an either-or kind of mix in that, God, Megan, trying to remember, 28 acres, 28.8 acres up on the north end. So we said, yeah, we can definitely do that. We'll look at that. We have implemented that into the overall plan. And then, in addition to that, the reducing down to the 30.8 acres and the reduction in overall square footage on the light industrial, we have also limited the maximum size of any building on that 30 acres to 175,000 square feet. No cross docks, limited number of truck docks, one per 10,000 for semis, and one per 5,000 for more of the vans and box trucks. Catch up on my notes, sorry. And then, we've maxed out to 631 units on residential. So with that, there's 399 on the high-density residential, which is the darker brown color of the apartments. And then, the balance of that would be within the medium-density residential adjacent to the Santa Fe Trail on the west side of the project. So the neighbors also were requesting more robust buffers between new and existing uses. So less intense uses, again, the medium-density residential uses are located along the western boundary of the property, trying to enhance the trail experience and the neighbors to the west with less noise, less impact visually to any of the higher-density uses on the And then, also, any structure containing an industrial use must be located a minimum of 500 feet from the boundary of the existing residential zone district to the west, and that complies with now where Old Denver Road is realigned. None of the industrial is within that 500-foot setback. It's basically all medium-density residential. In addition to that 500-foot setback, we've gone from the 90 feet in height that was on the sketch plan down to 50 feet in height for anything on the medium-density residential. And then, noise restrictions are imposed on the project, no more than 80 decibels between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and no more than 75 decibels between 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., meeting city and town code on that. So the neighbors also stated they did not want semi-truck traffic through the existing neighborhoods, wanted less semi-traffic overall. And with the realignment of Old Denver Road, we think we've addressed that. It's a tough turning movement for any truck to do anything but stay on exist, on the new Old Denver Road. So semi-truck traffic has been reduced due to the size, scope, and use limitations on the light industrial flex office buildings. The realignment of Old Denver Road is intended to keep traffic, including semi-truck traffic, away from the existing residential neighborhoods. The realignment of Old Denver Road is intended to keep traffic, including semi-truck traffic away from the existing residential neighborhoods. And then, uh, let's go to, yeah. So then our final meeting on the 14th of January, um, applicant, um, we showed this plan to the neighbors and general consensus was supportive. I think we've addressed, um, a lot of their concerns. Um, I will go into a little bit more detail. Um, one more thing that they did ask is that there's a, a wish for more parks. So we've added as an allowed use on every parcel, parks within the, within the overall P U D plan. So, um, there's conversation going on with some of the neighbors and businesses and with town of a regional sports complex or something like that, that's, um, allowed within the P U D, but further conversations to move forward on that one. Um, there was a conversation a minute ago, um, in regards to, um, Triview Metro District. And we are moving forward with the Board of Trustees with a new metro district that will cover a portion of our costs to develop all of this. But keep in mind too, that with the realignment of Old Denver Road, this now takes Old Denver Road out of town or it's still within the town, obviously, but now it puts it in the Triview Metro District. So with that, there's a couple of benefits financially to the town in the fact that Triview now, um, can participate in the overall design of that road, um, throw a little bit of money toward that road, potentially that's still to be worked out. Um, but the bigger picture is that they, the town will own the road just like they do now. But with it being in the Triview Metro District, Triview has to maintain Old Denver Road through Canexus. So that's a maintenance item off of the town's, uh, books. And then Triview also will provide all water and sanitary sewer services to the project. So no monument water is used on this project at all. And then they will also maintain the storm sewer systems and the detention bonds that we propose on the project, um, through the Triview District. And then can you skip to the enlarged? Slide? So back up, right there. So if you can go back to, um, thinking about the bigger picture, this shows you really how we're proposing the realignment of the neighborhood street or Old Denver Road and tying it into new Old Denver Road. So to the, um, top of the map is within Canexus and that is the new alignment of Old Denver Road. The, as you come further lower on the map, you see existing Old Denver Road and then how we come out of, um, the neighborhoods and tie that into a 90 degree intersection within the new Old Denver Road. As we do this project and move forward with our metro district, you know, our plan right now is that we will build all of the new Old Denver Road alignment in addition to the new, uh, intersections for the neighborhood all at the upfront as we move through the project versus phasing that down the road. Um, and then again, as Megan had mentioned earlier, as we come forward with final P U D plans on each one of the four lots, new traffic studies will be, uh, presented to you guys and to the Board of Trustees for each of those individual lots that will trigger, um, and talk about, um, when other improvements are needed in the timeframe of those. This one is the south, um, intersection with Old Denver, new Old Denver and old Old Denver and how we tie into the neighborhood. So plan right now is that we're moving forward with plan and profiles for the new street and how that ties into the neighborhoods. And then the next step with that, as we get into the full civil design plans, plan and profiles, um, then El Paso County Parks gets involved and we have, uh, numerous meetings between developer, El Paso County Parks, staff and neighbors in regards to the trail crossings that, uh, for the Santa Fe Trail. Currently what we're proposing, and we'll show you this in a rendering at the end, is when we had talked originally with El Paso County Parks, they wanted more of a pedestrian refuge island in the middle of the street. And remember, Old Denver Road will be now a three lane cross section, one lane north, one lane south and a full turn lane, uh, striped median basically down through the middle. With that, at each crossing, there will be a raised median and pedestrian refuge in those at appropriate signage and flashing lights, um, at each one of those. And then again, posted at 25 miles an hour with stop signs as needed. And that, that, there's more to follow on details with that, once we hear more from El Paso County Parks. Yeah, sorry. So this slide will pretty much show you kind of the summary of the changes that have occurred from the first submittal. So the approved sketch plan, um, you'll see a column for total residential units, total non-residential floor space or square footage, maximum industrial, uh, square footage. Um, the building size and then the maximum height on industrial, commercial office and the retail spa, and then the residential high density and, uh, medium density, uh, heights. So the approved sketch plan again, 465 residential units with a million square feet of non-residential uses. The preliminary plan submitted in November, uh, showed 788 residential units, again, medium and high density residential and a million square feet of space. Maximum industrial floor space was 500,000, um, maximum size for the, uh, commercial was 500,000 with a 90 foot height on each one of those. Um, the revised plan as of January 10th, dropped the residential units down to 631 units and the non-residential to 796,000 square feet and with a maximum of 470,000, uh, square feet on the industrial use with, uh, 326,000 being the, uh, maximum on the commercial space. 190,000 square feet was the maximum size of any building within the light industrial. And those were limited to, um, 60 feet in height. Then on the final submittal of the 14th of January, again, 631 residential units, both medium and high density. The slight increase in the non-residential floor space was that we took 10 acres out of, um, the industrial and added in that into the retail commercial space. We also limited the industrial to 395,000 square feet maximum. The 435,000 maximum is for the office, retail and commercial site. And then on the maximum industrial building size, we dropped that to 175,000 square feet maximum with a 60 foot height, uh, maximum limit. So have reduced quite a bit from the industrial uses and sizes and, uh, accommodated the additional residential units that neighbors were really pushing for. So we've got more of a mixed use project that we think, uh, fits the neighborhood and in the area a lot better. Still providing enough from a industrial standpoint and commercial retail standpoint for a tax base for the city. So. I appreciate your time. Any questions at this point? Okay. I will turn this back over to Andrea.
Thank you. I'm very briefly going to talk about the comprehensive plan before passing on to Carolyn White to sum up with the, uh, criteria. And Megan did a, a good job of kind of reviewing the comprehensive plan. Um, uh, just emphasizing again that the, the sketch plan and P D zoning in 2020 was found to be in compliance or in general consistency with the, um, comprehensive plan, which hasn't changed since then. And, uh, it was the, it basically a decision based on the fact that, uh, the mix of industrial, commercial offices, civic uses that we were proposing and, uh, well, followed the intent of the business campus, um, uh, classification, land use classification in the, in the, uh, comprehensive plan in that it would create a mix of use and provide tax base and jobs. And that, um, the one thing we didn't really refer to before is that on the north and south end of this site, there is an area that's designated with parks, recreation and trails. And we have honored that by identifying those areas on, on the sketch plan and in the preliminary plan as open space areas. And, um, the addition of the medium high density residential, which as noted, it was not, is not, uh, permitted specifically in the B C land use designation was found to be appropriate and inconsistent with the comprehensive plan because it met a need for more affordable workforce housing, which is very specifically referenced in the comprehensive plan. And then the, um, general mixed use development met a number of the general policies, uh, which sought to provide a wider array of land uses and move away from single use developments to mix of, to a mix of more complementary uses. So that was the finding at the time regarding the sketch plan. This preliminary plan is consistent with the sketch plan, therefore those findings would naturally carry forward to the preliminary plan. And with that, I'm going to hand off to Carolyn.
Think I can. Well, thank you very much, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, members of the staff and the town and members of the public. Um, thanks for the opportunity to present this project to you tonight. My name is Carolyn White. I'm Land Use Counsel for the applicant. And my role here tonight is to take all that you've heard about what the project is and link that back to the criteria that, um, are supposed to guide your decision and that was explained and, and reviewed by the town planner just a moment ago. Um, we've also sent you a letter that was about 10 pages long in which we went through each of the criteria in some detail. And I'm now going to read every word of that letter to you. No, just kidding. I won't. Um, but I would like to enter that letter into the record just officially to make sure that it's in there along with the slide deck that we've used this evening and the staff report and the project narrative. I think they're all already in there, but just to make doubly sure. And, um, what I would, would like to do is just, um, maybe highlight a couple of the really key factors and the key criteria we think were most important to the staff and to the public in, um, reviewing this and presenting to you. Certainly happy to come back and revisit any of the ones that I don't touch on tonight. But there are 13 criteria and there are a handful, maybe three or four, that seem to rise to the top as being most relevant and determining, um, whether this preliminary P D plan is, is right for this location and right for this project. The other thing that I want to mention again is, um, there was a review at the beginning about sort of how your code has changed from the P D plan, three step concept to the P U D plan, two step concept. But whether it's P D or P U D, the whole purpose of P D zoning by definition is really its custom. It's specific. It's unique to that site. And so it's for sites that don't fit precisely into one of the sort of baseline generic zone districts in your town. It's for sites that have some really special characteristics or unique characteristics that require customized attention. And you can certainly see in this case, with the proximity to I-25 on one side and a residential neighborhood on the other side, that it really did require some customized attention to design a set of standards and criteria that really helped, um, as Brock said at the beginning, make this the best development it could be, but also make it transition nicely to all of the different types of uses and facilities that exist around it. Um, so just to, so this, this lists the first four criteria. They're very specific to parks, open space and trails. And, um, both the staff report and our letter list all of those in detail. I'm going to move on to the second set of criteria. Um, and this set of criteria talks about, um, the importance of increasing the variety of development to fill a need and/or provide amenities for the benefit of the town residents. So there are a couple of ways in which this proposed preliminary P U D plan fulfills those criteria. Certainly there are a variety of needs that are being met here. The, the comprehensive plan talks about the need and desire for a tax base and jobs. And obviously we've tried to maximize that in this location, but at the same time, the plan also talks about the need for affordable housing, workforce housing, opportunities for people to fill those jobs, to live in proximity to those jobs. And then there's also this idea of providing amenities and some of these connections and the connectivity with the trail crossings and the parks and open space that are being provided are, um, specifically designed to fulfill and meet those needs, uh, and criteria. Whoops, I went too fast. Um, the other, the, uh, one of the other things that this P U D does is provide a variety of development and housing types. And what, even though there are, um, we talked about residential versus non-residential and as broad categories, there are also an opportunity for a wide variety of residential housing types on here. Um, from medium density, single family attached, cluster homes to high density and town homes. And so that criterion is also met. Number seven is I think perhaps one of the most important criteria in evaluating this proposal because it talks about, um, buffering and the appropriate relationships between the uses and the sighting of the uses within the property relative to the adjacent existing uses and proposed uses. And so, um, one of the key things, you heard that, um, summary of all the ways that this project has evolved. And there are a lot of numbers, how many square feet was changed, what's the height? But what it really amounts to is that, um, as this project has evolved, it has evolved in such a way that the less intense uses are placed closer to the existing residential. And then they transition up to the more intense uses, being farther away from the residential and closer to I-25. Similarly, you see the same thing with the heights. The heights, um, are designed such that the maximum height immediately adjacent to the residential is the lowest on the site and the higher heights are placed further away. Um, you also see that it observes all of the other buffers elsewhere in the town code, even though this is customized zoning. So for example, the 500 foot buffer for the, um, industrial adjacent to a residential site, that is met with this proposed plan. Um, and then also specific to the industrial buildings, there was some concern about, hey, this site's been designated industrial for years. And when you think of industrial, some people might think of very large buildings, lots and lots of semi-traffic. But, um, the intent here is for something that's a little bit more along the lines of light industrial. But you also have to strike a balance with limiting, not limiting too much, what types of users can locate here. And so that's what the design team has been working on when you hear those changes in the maximum size that a building can be, really sort of breaking up large masses and shrinking them down, uh, reducing the massing to make it transition more smoothly into the existing neighborhoods and also with the proposed commercial and retail on the northernmost part of the site. So all of these things really have resulted in, um, a wide variety and mix of uses that are arranged on the site in a way that is very customized to fit this site and this site only and to transition from the less intense to the more intense and yet still accommodate the wide variety of goals and desires and opportunities that are set forth in the comprehensive plan. Um, the last one I'm going to talk about is the circulation system and the adequate capacity criterion. Um, I don't think I've ever worked on a project anywhere in Colorado where that wasn't one of the most important criteria. And certainly hearing some of the feedback and reviewing some of the comments, thinking about how the, how the traffic is going to circulate has been a very important factor in working on this project. And, um, a lot of those issues are really solved with that realignment of Old Denver Road, now to be called New Denver Road, I guess. And, um, really pushing the majority of the traffic associated with this development away from the existing neighborhood and transitioning the existing roadway into a local street, as was described in more detail earlier. Um, I'm the lawyer, not the traffic engineer. So if you have questions about that, we do have our traffic engineer here. But I wanted to mention it specifically in relation to that criterion. Um, there's a, there are a couple more here, water and sewer utility service, required utilities are available and so on. Um, and then also finally, the proposal being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The town planner explained that in some detail and, um, Andrea just went over that again. I won't repeat all that, um, other than to make the simple point that, um, this project is consistent with the sketch plan. The preliminary P U D plan is consistent with the sketch plan. And you've already found that the sketch plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So sort of by definition, the preliminary P U D plan ought to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So in conclusion, just to reiterate and reemphasize that this plan has evolved multiple times since its initial submittal. And it has evolved, we think, in a way that makes it, um, a better plan. It makes it, um, something that fits nicely in this particular location and addresses the vast majority of the concerns that have been raised throughout the process in all of the public meetings and by staff and, and from the in all of the public meetings and by staff and, and from the neighbors. It's consistent with the sketch plan, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, it meets all the criteria and it fulfills many of the specific goals in the comprehensive plan related to things like additional tax base, wide variety of uses and so on. And so, um, for those reasons, we ask for your favorable recommendation of approval for the preliminary P U D plan. That concludes our formal presentation, and of course, um, our entire team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, do we have one more? Oh. You want to talk about that? I'm sorry, it doesn't conclude our formal presentation.
So I'll, I'll just wrap up. Before I do, um, I must, uh, apologize when I see old, Old Denver Road and new Old Denver Road written on paper, it all seems pretty good, but when you say it out loud about 10 times in a presentation, it sounds ridiculous. So we don't have any other reference, but, uh, hopefully that's not too confusing. But we believe the application does meet, um, all the criteria set forth in the code. And, um, and, uh, there are, we believe, no, uh, major outstanding items or matters that presented valid barrier to approval tonight. Boiling all this down, in fact, there are really only two primary areas where the preliminary P U D that you're looking at tonight don't fully mirror and match the approved P D sketch plan, uh, which was approved by the Monument Planning Commission and Board of Trustees in September 2020. One is the Old Denver Road alignment, which I think everybody believes is a, a, a far superior solution, and not only takes all of our Canexus traffic onto the road, but brings all town traffic through, uh, Old Denver Road, separating it from the, uh, the new Old Denver Road alignment, separating it for the, from the neighbors to the west. And that results in, in better road and traffic circulation design for everyone. And then, of course, this preliminary P U D does allow for more residential uses than was originally contemplated on the sketch P D plan. And these residential, residential uses, uh, directly, uh, replace the land areas that were previously designated for light industrial, which is what we heard loud and clear for the neighbors. So both these key preliminary P U D plan revisions were made as a direct result of those multiple meetings with the neighbors and staff to address concerns regarding traffic and reducing the amount of the industrial uses. And then we also did include extensive, uh, additional, specific light industrial design standards to further address concerns. So, um, I do need to take this moment and publicly thank, uh, your, your town planning staff and many of the neighbors who participated in this. We did it after hours every time, so they gave their time and, um, and did provide constructive input to arrive at this preliminary P U D before you tonight. We ask for your recommendation for approval, and we have our whole team here to answer any questions, and thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. And just to keep this orderly, what we'll do is, as with every meeting, we'll have the public comments section or position opened up. And we'll take those public comments, and I would ask the applicant to just either take notes or just, you know, keep a, a good listening ear. And following the closing of public comments, we will then ask the applicant for a rebuttal or response, just to keep this orderly, so not a back and forth. So at this time, I will, um, first open up the public comments to the folks in the audience who are in person here. If you can and if you will, just, uh, present yourself to the, I don't know if we had a sign up sheet outside anyway, but when you step up to the podium, if you have not already signed up, please do. If you have, that's fine, just please announce your name and your address. And again, I'm going to be limiting to three minutes per person, and so just, uh, not picking and choosing here, but whoever would like to start, please go ahead.
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is Steve King. Welcome to the new members with the planning commission, and I know there's going to be a few others. You have a good leader in Chris, and you have a good planning director in Megan. She's brought up the level of professionalism with this town considerably, and I appreciate that. I was one of the citizens who led the charge to stop the Canexus Distribution Center project last summer, based on the lack of compliance to the, um, planning commission's sketch plan hearing presentation. That plan had little or no detail on the sketch plan, and we've come a long way since then, and, um, I'm grateful for that. In your packet, you have a letter from me explaining why I think this project now substantially complies to the criteria set forth in the sketch plan approval in 2020. This was a several month process to bring this project from a distribution center behemoth to where it is today, and the applicant made good faith effort with the citizens group to arrive at this point, so I'll let my letter speak for itself. Moving forward, I want you to consider why we had to go through this process over the last six months or so to get this project palatable to the citizens and negotiate with the applicant. I know some of you weren't here when the sketch plan was approved, but I want you to understand what your roles are as I see it. These are my opinions. When a project comes before you as a P U D zoning change, it becomes its own zone district with its own rules and regulations, in essence, a custom zone district. A P U D is a negotiation between a landowner and the town to grant special rights in exchange for something of value to the town. That's something of value could be a stellar project, or a park, or reduced building heights, et cetera. A P U D is a privilege granted to the town, granted by the town, to offer flexibility to the landowner in exchange for amenities and is not a right. In many ways, the planning commissioners are to be advocates for the citizens of the town. Your job is to poke holes in every P U D application and look for worst case scenarios. Your job is to prevent situations like what happened at the church last summer, where it was a failure in the system and it became a fight over what the town perceived sketch plan approval meant and what the applicant perceived. This should never have happened. This plan should have been more defined. It is not the planning's department job to put before you the highest and best use for the property. Their job is to make sure the plan substantially complies with the codes, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan when it is a P U D. But who defines substantially? That word may mean something entirely different to you and me. Because no P U D is going to conform to every town code, this one doesn't either, or every section of the comprehensive plan, that is why you must look closely at the site plan, the codes, the comprehensive plan, to make sure that the project is a good fit for the town, subject to all the required criteria. After all, the applicants are asking for a special zone district, and once granted, it is difficult to change. But since they are asking for a custom made zone district, you have the right to include provisions that benefit the town, restrict certain aspects of the plan, or you can deny the application. This can be a tough job, so hopefully you're willing to do the work.
Mr. King, if you can, just summarize and let us know. All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, in summary, because I have two or three more paragraphs. What you see before you in this preliminary P U D site plan is a result of negotiations between involved citizens, town staff and Canexus in order to better define what this project will resemble, which makes it less intensive than the originally proposed. It's better to find Old Denver Highway's realignment, take some of the stress off the western neighborhoods, and now everyone will know what the project is to be expected, which is fair and as it should be. And once again, I appreciate the willingness of the Canexus team to come to the table, which is why you have my support for this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, uh, from the audience, anyone would like to step up? All right, um, having no one else, I will turn to our online world. I don't know if Megan or Teresa. Okay, so if you are online and you'd like to make a comment at this time, please raise your hand, uh, that fixture in the Microsoft Teams. Please let us know you'd like to make a comment. I'll keep this at least portion open a little bit longer, give you some time to find that, and raise your hand. All right, I'll turn back to staff. Anyone raise their hands? Okay. And my other question would be from anyone on the telephone. Is there any way to, to see that or know if anyone is there? Okay, all right. Yeah, so anyone on the telephone, just to raise your hand, hit star five, and we'll be able to see that, and we'll give you a moment to find that. Okay, back to staff. Anyone? No one. All right. Okay. So I will, uh, having seen no other comments, I will close the public comments section at this time. I will return, uh, there, I don't think there's any questions posed to the applicant. I'm not sure if there's any other additional information the applicant wishes to share. If not, that's fine. Okay, all right. Okay, so let's go ahead and, um, close that portion and go to the commissioners for some Q and A, and I will open up to my fellow commissioners for any questions, comments they'd like to make. Go ahead, yeah.
I have a few questions. I had a list, but I've marked most of them off. You did a good job of answering them. Do I understand that you're going to, uh, are you going to have overlapping metro districts? You'll have tri-view, and then are you going to have another district as a finance mechanism? Or did I just hear that wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, please come on up and speak into the mic. Thank you.
So, uh, you did hear correctly, but there is a distinction. Tri-view metro districts provides the, the sewer and the water and charges a certain number of mills, and then our proposed metro districts will be, come for the town board at the same time as this preliminary P U D, will be for infrastructure that's not, it's public infrastructure, but it's not included, uh, in tri-views per view. So it'll be a, a, a smaller mill levy than perhaps you've approved elsewhere in the town when, when tri-view wasn't involved. So our collective metro district mills plus the tri-view mills will total the total mills that you might otherwise approve, or the town might otherwise approve for metro districts that are not included in the tri-view district.
And those mills are only within your boundaries?
That's correct. They only, only affect our property and nobody else.
Okay. Is it okay if I go on?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you have a, a, a limit in some areas of 75 feet on your building height? And at the same time, one of the criteria is an unencumbered view of mountains to the west. Are you? I, I'm not sure how you're going to deal with that. Obviously, you can't have straight 75-foot buildings. Are you going to be working with, uh, F A R that's restrictive, so you have a lot of open space?
That's correct. There's F A Rs associated with each land use within the project. Additionally, part of, uh, the discussions with the neighbors with the light industrial area, by limiting not only the total number of square feet, but the maximum square feet for any one building ensures it can't be a monolith, one large building. It'll be a series of smaller buildings, and in fact, the only way to come anywhere near that maximum square footage is to orient them east to west, preserving those view corridors in the middle of the property.
Right. I, I think this may be going into your final plan, but do you know, is your plan to align the residential homes on the old Denver Highway, the, the local road? So that, that residential faces that local road and not the newly built road?
So, yes, in short, and here's why. Number one, you just mentioned views to the west, so that orientation would make sense from just a pure market standpoint. Number two is that, remember that, um, the Santa Fe Trail runs right along there too. So having that access and orientation to the Santa Fe Trail makes a lot of sense, uh, for the future homeowners there. However, that's the orientation of the homes and how people are going to face. There is no access for these homes and the traffic from them
Right.
onto Old, Old Denver Road. They all funnel onto New Old Denver Road to preserve that local, what will hopefully be a local street standard for the old, Old Denver Road neighborhood to the west.
Okay. Yeah.
Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just two more. Who is paying for the improvements to the, the now old Denver Highway, the local road, the landscaping, the turn lane?
We as the develop, if I understand your question, we as the developer, mainly by using those metro district funds, will be constructing upfront all the new Old Denver Road alignment through our project, but that includes tying in and revamping those intersections for the old, old Denver Road alignment to make everything work through there. The old, old Denver Road will just simply become a local street that will only be
Okay.
really accessible by the neighbors, and so that just becomes a, a, a less used street.
So I thought the, the illustration I was looking at was some improvements to the old Denver Road to become a local road, but that was actually an illustration of the new alignment.
Yeah, and when that new alignment happens,
Okay.
the old, old Denver Road will be, um, perpendicular, uh, so there'll be, you know, the only way to go into the old, old Denver Road to the neighborhood is to make, make a hard right or a hard left.
Gotcha.
So most of the traffic will flow, and then it will just basically, once those new intersections are realigned, it will simply, um, the old, old Denver Road will simply stay in place, but just function as a, a local access road to the existing neighborhood.
Okay. And last question, traffic, traffic engineer. I, the second beacon light has already failed. And the staff report says they're proposing a traffic light there. Is this part of your project or, um?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Mike and them answer, but, uh, that'll be, I'll let them answer.
So I'm sorry, can you
Well.
repeat your question one time?
Sure. It's in the staff report that there might have to be a traffic signal at Second and Beacon Light or Old Denver Highway, and, and that is an intersection that I believe has already failed. And, and I don't know, since the traffic study indicates what this project is going to produce, are you going to be responsible for improvements to that intersection? For instance, the traffic signal?
So when you read or reference the traffic study as part of this project that was submitted and part of your package,
Uh huh.
the numbers or the traffic volumes within the report, and if you read that, there's kind of an interim condition and an ultimate condition. Both of those, let's go to the interim condition. Interim condition on the overall traffic study anticipates full buildout of Canexus, of all this project. And the ultimate includes all of our project and other developers along Old Denver Road. So as we move forward on the project, like Brock talked about, we will build all of the new Old Denver Road through our project, connecting it to the neighborhood. And then as we come forward with each of the four lots within Canexus, there will be additional traffic studies that will dictate exactly what, based on their final plan, what their final traffic numbers are in comparison to what we provided in our traffic study. Those then will anticipate or, um, discuss how those improvements and timing of those improvements.
So, so Megan, I think what, what you're saying is, this would be a town project, any improvements to Second Beacon Light, and this project may participate partially in the financing of it?
Yes. There's a remaining, I mean, the balance of Old Denver Road is deficient currently. We've put Old Denver Road in the, um, major transportation corridors plan. We're setting ourselves up to attempt to get some of this infrastructure, infrastructure funding, um, that's coming available to make improvements to Old Denver Road. The town needs to start having discussions about right of way at the corner of, um, Second Street and Old Denver Road. But yes, ultimately, the town needs to work with not only this developer, but other developers in the area related to that intersection, um, and look for funding and how, as a partnership, we are going to make those needed improvements. The town doesn't have the funding for that right now, but it's not fully triggered right now, and eventually there's going to be, you know, the tipping point where if it's not fully constructed by the time it's fully triggered, that there could be options, not necessarily this developer, but another developer in the area, cost recovery options, cost sharing options. but another developer in the area, cost recovery options, cost sharing options. We'll look at that a little bit more specifically when the final PUD plans come in. And I think make that as needed part of a, in public improvement agreement.
All right, other commissioners? Questions, comments?
Sure. Commissioner White. First of all, I just want to say how pleased I am that the developer and the town staff and the community came together, spent time negotiating a workable solution that addresses a lot of the concerns. It's not often in the political climate today that we see compromise occurring. And it's refreshing to see that it did actually play out. I'm, I'm really, really glad to see that we've decreased the crossings of the Santa Fe Trail from three to two. That was one of my biggest concerns, Andre, if you remember, when we talked about this in September of 2020. One of the things that I do want to ask is in the approved sketch plan in September 2020, there was the approved use of light industrial. But I see here on this is just labeled industrial. And do I understand that the use in this purple on the plan is in fact the uses defined as light industrial in the, in the code? Okay. Great. Okay.
And just to be sure, for our online folks, sorry.
Light industrial, there are no heavy industrial uses allowed in the town anymore anyway. And then what you need to do though is look on the light industrial land uses. So you can see all the different types of, of light industrial uses that are, that are both at the same time expanded somewhat as well as restricted somewhat based on discussions with neighbors.
Right, right. And, and the reason I bring that up is obviously the existing housing owners in the housing area to the west, they were concerned about the industrial uses and the proximity. But then we have here in the new development, housing that's going even closer to these industrial uses. And so I, I was concerned about maybe the incompatibility. But I see here in the code that light industrial is defined as, by their nature have minimal detrimental effect beyond the zone in the districts they are located and do not constitute a detriment to the public health or welfare by reason of smoke, radiation, noise, dust, odor, gas, glare, vibration, particulate matter, water pollution, or use of toxic or hazardous chemicals. So we are to understand that all the proposed uses in this industrial area complies with that.
That is correct. In fact, we state explicitly that it must comply with all state, local and federal guidelines.
Awesome. Great. Well, that makes me happy. Okay. Okay. I, I'm just going off of the map that, that I'm seeing here and.
It's an illustrative and exhibit.
Okay.
It takes what's on the PUD and then puts colors to it so it's easier to see.
Got it.
But that's, yeah, it's the PUD that you're approving. It should say light industrial.
Light industrial. Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Let's see. If I am a pedestrian in the existing housing to the west, am I able to easily access the businesses in this development? Is, is there a plan to accommodate pedestrian traffic? Or do I need to get in my car and drive over to the new development?
So if you picture the existing roadway today, there's a number of access points from the neighborhood where people are crossing at those points.
Very informal, right. Yeah. Right.
Obviously those stay in place because now we've moved Old Denver into the project. And then with the crossings, again, we'll have that crossing of the trail at the north end and the south end. And then as you come into the project from the trail, then as you go down the new old Denver Road alignment, there's sidewalk on both sides. And then there will be sidewalks integral to each one of the parcels as they come out to the street and back to the trail. So yes, to answer your question.
Okay.
You should be able to walk from existing neighborhoods to any commercial or retail space very easily.
Well, there'll also be access points. I envision the medium density in Lot Two, those residents wanting easy access to the Santa Fe Trail. So do you think that pedestrians might utilize those in order to?
I would, the, the vision is yes to that question. We'll see as we get to the final PUD, how all those connections and trail systems work within the sidewalk areas to the trail. But yes.
Okay. All right. Great. On those hard lefts and hard rights, if I'm traveling north on the new old Denver Highway and I want to turn onto that frontage road, turning left, i- is there going to be a turn lane? And is that going to be accommodated to make those hard lefts and hard rights, depending which way you're going?
So when you look at the ultimate design of Denver Road, Baptist to Second, including the realigned portion through Conexus, that will be a three lane cross section. So there's a, there's a northbound travel lane, a southbound travel lane, and a full striped median left turn movement, median in the middle of the road, all the way from Baptist to Second. And then there will be turn lanes built at appropriate driveways into each one of the lots. So into the apartment complex, into the light industrial, into the commercial or medium density residencies. Those will have additional turn lanes built with those.
Okay.
For turn lanes. Yes.
Great. And then lastly, you spoke of affordable housing. And I just wonder what specific design or other factors you're envisioning being incorporated into the residential units to make them affordable?
Talk to. First housing. Trying to make things cheaper in today's world.
Hard.
But with the builders that we're talking to, they are, you know, they're always trying to, to refine their designs to make them more affordable, less expensive homes. So that everybody from the firefighter to the grocery worker.
Yeah. And Mike was former president of the HBA, so he could probably give this information in his sleep. But I just wanted to clarify, in, in, in our world and in certain jurisdictions, there is a distinction. When you say affordable housing, sometimes that gets to be a, a bad word, subsidized housing. This, just to be clear, this is market rate housing, not subsidized. It's, so we like to call it accessible housing. And part of the way of accomplishing that is, is getting the, the densities that you see before you on the plan, which allows more units at the appropriate density to reduce it to a more accessible, not affordable, accessible rate.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify affordable versus accessible.
Sure, sure.
Sometimes a lot of blowback inadvertently.
Right, right. Is, is that part of the criteria as you're talking to builders? That you want to make their products or see their products to be accessible?
Well, it is. There's a couple builders we're talking to preliminarily. Obviously, we're not going to go into contract with anybody until he hits the process.
Right, yeah.
Two of them are proposing that because you're talking up to 396 units, doing two different product types. So one would be a little bit higher amenitized, a little bit more high end in terms of the higher end, not high end, higher end in terms of the finish. And another one, because you've got that much housing to keep the cost down with that density, would be a little bit lower end of the spectrum. So two, two product housing types is what's being envisioned by the two builders we're talking to right now.
Okay.
So at least a portion of it, yes.
Got it. Great.
Not the entire thing. Part of it will be utilized and have a little bit higher rates. But the other half, close to half, should be, yes.
Okay. Good to know. All right. I think those are all the questions that I have. Thank you.
I just had a few questions regarding the traffic. And I understand there's hard rights and hard lefts dissuading the semis or box trucks from going into the old, old Denver. And how would you, or how are you envisioning dissuading or possibly prohibiting the traffic from, if they, if the commercial or industrial needs to get back on I-25 North, not using 105 as opposed to keeping it to Baptist? Is that the idea that Baptist is going to be the, the major and, and real artery for Conexus?
So from a traffic standpoint, we've always envisioned, you know, obviously part of the traffic goes to Second Avenue. A large part of it goes.
Second Avenue, excuse me.
Baptist Road. That can be directed based on signage and things as we get into final design of the roads. But you can direct semis one way or the other based on signage.
Okay. But no other physical like this, like the hard rights being, it's, it's extremely difficult for a semi to make that turn. It's going to be completely dissuaded. But in terms of dissuading a semi from traveling up to Second Street, signage would be that solution?
Yeah. And remember that when the existing old Denver Road, as you go north to Second Street, will be completely redesigned. So it, it will handle a lot more traffic than it does today, obviously. But yeah, you could handle that with signage.
Chairman, I'm gonna weigh in a little bit here as well. I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. I don't know how we would prevent any type of traffic on, from traveling north to accessing Beacon and Second. What we're talking about is when we talk about limiting traffic or ensuring that those hard rights are there so the traffic isn't flowing on what will be the local adjacent to the residences. But I don't know how, we can put some signs up, right? But if, if truck drivers, if, if, if any, any driver wants to go north, and we have a, a sign that says you need to go a certain way. I mean, I think it's going to be extremely hard to limit traffic from heading north to Second. That's why the town's looking at working with HR Green, Tri-View's engineer, to, to find an appropriate approach to that intersection design. And we've talked about putting up some signage related to ensuring that, that, that people understand that's a local road and that they're staying on what is the new, new old Denver Road and not going on the local road. But Old Denver Road is a truck route marked from the town monument. And so for, for me to sit here and say, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but I don't want you to leave this hearing tonight thinking there will be no trucks driving north to Second because we have that marked as a truck route. Second Street is a truck route to Mitchell to get to Synthes. We hope in the future from Synthes through Willow Springs and down to Baptist Road, there's going to be an opening there. And we would like to reestablish new truck routes. And that being one of them, take trucks off of Second to Mitchell to Synthes and have them go through Willow Springs and down to Baptist. And that could, that would probably remove Old Denver Road from being a truck route. But I just want to be, you know, really careful about, I, I don't want to give people the impression they see one truck driving from, in the future, driving from Conexus to Second and, and that, that wouldn't be permitted. There, there's going to be some of that.
I think it's just the volume.
And, and right now, we'll have some of that until we, as the town, can reestablish those truck routes. And I don't know if we would do that until the Willow Springs access is opened and probably until we see the timing of some of this and how this shapes up to make more of a global change to, to how we route truck traffic through the town.
I guess on a similar note, any thoughts, and possibly this is more to staff, any thoughts on Baptist and that intersection? Right now, I think it's just a roundabout.
I want to say, stay tuned to the Board of Trustees meeting on March 7th because on Monday, as part of a different hearing, that whole stretch came up from Tarazo to, to the roundabout. And we as staff have little control over some of that. CDOT is going to be at the Board of Trustees hearing on March 7th to address that specifically, signalization of Tarazo, how that plays in with all of the development in that area, triggers for a second lane at that roundabout at Baptist, which isn't triggered currently, what those triggers are, warrants, the whole seat, how CDOT thinks 101. And that's going to happen pretty early in the hearing on March 7th.
Thank you. And just a procedural note, do I need to do a roll call for Commissioner Trujillo? To just get him into, I didn't know if that's required at this point.
I think you just recognized that, Commissioner. You did it.
All right. Just wanted to keep it official.
Thank you.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Rowers. What you just brought up was exactly what my concern was. Traffic moving west beyond, I think it's Cherry Creek, Clark Valley Circle into town, especially the semis. And one of the things that I was going to put on the table for discussion, and, and you've put it up since, in a way, is it possible in your design, because of the way you've got it, your lot number four is going to have its own entrance? Is that correct? Is, that's part of the plan? Is it possible for you to consider, is it possible for it to be considered that you have a hard right in and a hard left out at that intersection? So that semi trucks only have one way to go? In right, out left. And my concern, what caused my concern on this is when you get beyond where the fourth funnel is, when you get beyond that, first that roadway down the creek is a very, and then you have over on the left at Santa Fe Avenue, you have the District 38 school bus barn, which means during a good portion of the year, there's a tremendous amount of traffic that comes in and out of there, serving the schools at certain times. Therefore, if we can keep at least the semi traffic, truck traffic out of that area and strictly go down Baptist Road because the accesses to get on I-25 are much easier up Baptist Road than they are getting up Second and then going up and going around. So I don't see any disadvantage to the movement of vehicles if that were to be done. And if there's any agreement to that, I'd be prepared to make a, a condition that that be part of your design.
So thank you for those comments. I think the short answer is we would, we would like to take that under advisement for our traffic engineers to take a hard look at that when we come through with our final PUD design. And the reason is, and I've learned this over the years, when you kind of force things one way, there's sometimes unintended consequences that happen elsewhere. There will be at least two points of access, by the way, to our industrial property because of life safety access and those kinds of things. So I am happy to commit to take a, a look at that. But I, we're going to need to run, keep in mind, we've run, we've, I haven't done a, the, the traffic engineers have run many distribution models based on state criteria and your road standards. And those distribution models assume traffic goes a certain direction based on the type of traffic it is, the generation of the traffic, et cetera. By doing that, we then know what the ultimate build out's going to be and have determined what the ultimate improvements will likely be throughout this whole area. So that's a long way of saying, we, we got to take a look at that. Because if we do that, we then might have, reduce our obligation to participate in the Second Street, for example, if we got not much going there. So if you would, because there is a rational nexus legal principle that we can only, you know, be forced to do what we're contributing. But I would make the commitment here tonight. But I would make the commitment here tonight, I ask you not to make it a condition of approval, but when we come back to you with a final PUD and know the use and the intensity and the type of users, we'll take a look at that in doing so. But I think doing it tonight without having the benefit of running that analysis preliminarily with an updated traffic study that looks specifically at that and the intersections it affects, including then Baptist Road, I'd be really reluctant to make, agree to that commitment or condition tonight. If you can, if you can humor us on that, we'll go on record and say, we'll take a hard look at that for you when we come back.
I'm very pleased with the response. I, just that you would look at it, I think is very significant to look at, and I certainly understand your point on it. I just wanted to make the point and hear what I heard from you. Thank you very much. If, if you come back with the final and you say things that I don't like, you'll hear from me then. But, but I think that that's worth the looking at. And can I continue? I have a question for, just sometimes Danny Oars has difficulty understanding things. And this is for Ms. White. In your letter on page seven, at paragraph seven, you make this statement, and I'm not quite sure I understand the statement. It says importantly, the 500-foot buffer zone along existing Old Denver Road provided by the preliminary PUD plan will prohibit structures containing industrial uses within 500 feet of existing residential uses slash neighborhoods and limit the height of those homes to 50 foot. I don't understand.
I know exactly what we're getting at here. So in your town code, there is a section that you all may be able to quote, which I certainly can't. But it's, there is a 500-foot setback between any proposed light industrial use, or any industrial use, but light industrial in our case, and existing neighborhoods, in this case to the west. And so because that's an existing neighborhood, there can be no industrial, light industrial, other industrial within 500 feet of that existing neighborhood. If you look, I don't know if you all have screens, but if you look, Megan, maybe you can point out the, on just the other side of Old Denver Road, on the east side, there's a dotted line that kind of extends along the project. That is that 500-foot setback buffer. So what we've done is say, that's an existing neighborhood, but we've now got a comprehensive PUD. In order to work with the neighbors, we are putting medium-density residential in the orange area along there. That wouldn't apply per your code to the homes within our own PUD in that orange area, but it does apply to the existing neighborhood. So when she's talking about the 500-foot setback to industrial, that's to the existing neighborhood. The medium-density PUD have a reduced height than what was allowed under the comp PUD plan of, what was it, 90 feet originally? And then we reduced it, and now those homes are a maximum of 50 feet. So it's, there's two different subjects there. One is the homes we're building, and one is the homes across the street that are existing. No, that's good. That was a good question. And perhaps, Megan, if I misstated in any of that, please clarify.
I, I think by now, you probably know it as well as I do.
And I've got one other question that, that came up as a result of Commissioner White's comments, talking about the access of the folks in the existing neighborhood, being able to get to the commercial and other properties that they may want to visit out there. And what I heard was indicated currently, those people are walking up over the trail to get to the trail, right? And that those could be used for them to get access now across the new Old Denver Highway. Does that mean that there's going to be some nice accesses put in where those dirtways are now so that people don't have to walk through the dirt to get to the crossing?
So that, as part, as part of this, I don't think that that's the developer's responsibility. However, the town understands that the neighborhood would like to talk about sidewalk connection. I mentioned that there's a lot of investment in infrastructure funds coming down from the federal government, being funneled through our local area of governments. I think we're looking at all of that from the town. But if we're talking from the local for an easy, defined pedestrian way from the neighborhood to have a trail connection up to the existing trail, that hasn't been discussed yet, that's not on their plans. And we'll continue those conversations with El Paso County and see what type of funding that the town can get related to Old Denver Road and try to get that, even sidewalk has been mentioned. I don't know if all the neighbors in the neighborhood are all on the same page, but there's been a conversation, why can't we get sidewalk on the west side of Old Denver Road adjacent to the neighborhood? So I think those are some considerations we need to give for the long term.
Yeah. And to expand on what Megan just said, is we're reminded repeatedly that the Santa Fe Trail and all the right-of-way, which that trail is owned by, is owned by the county. And so I can't make any commitments, or we can't make any commitments to do anything to that without their explicit buy-off, approval, support, et cetera. Would we support those connections? Of course. Yeah. Connectivity is a wonderful thing, especially pedestrian. But they, they, with some arm twisting by the town, really have that jurisdiction on what they're willing to allow in that right-of-way in their ownership.
One more thing, and then I'll shut up. No. What I want to say, and I've said this before, I've been on this commission longer than any commissioner up here. I've been on it since approximately 2016 late. And Megan can, Andrea can verify, verify what I'm about to say. I have never seen a better planning of, our director has done a great job of overseeing The applicant has done a great job of working, and the citizens have done a far better job than I have ever seen in any of the projects that we've had. Sometimes us commissioners set up here, and we have to try to determine what these citizens feel about something when we're making decisions. We certainly, in my opinion, in this case, don't have to, to do that. We've done some clarification, but I can't think, and as I said, Andrea's been to a lot of these, I can't think of a better, a better process than what we've been exposed to tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Trujillo, heard a lot of this already while I was on the phone as I was driving back off the mountain, so I apologize for being late. But I heard the brief, definitely was a quality brief, and I appreciate that. Two questions for you. We talked about the traffic, Commissioner White and Commissioner Orr both looked at that. And obviously, for staff, my concern is, as you go back to the actual drawing of the roadway, if you could go back to that real quick. But it shows the individual roadway, I believe, at nine feet with a center lane, a nine feet again, and a sidewalk at two or five feet, I believe. As we go, yeah, where it's, you have that depiction. There you go. My question on this one is, three to five years down the line, obviously for staff more so, what is the plan if the volume of traffic is so increased as this truck route is already laid out? Is there a plan to expand this? And if so, let's say three to five years, those trucks are coming in, is there buffers already made in place to allow that? I'm seeing trees, I'm seeing a lot of entities here, that 10 feet on both ends of the pedestrian sidewalk. Just looking down the line, is it going to allow us to expand that at a future time?
So let me try to answer that.
Please.
So, again, Mike DeGrant.
Yes, sir.
President of SHC Community. So Old Denver Road is being designed for the 2040 traffic volumes.
Yes, sir.
So we have taken into account in our traffic study, other traffic studies in the region. So there's a number of traffic studies that are done down on properties along Baptist Road. There's Willow Springs, there's Forest Lakes, a number of different traffic studies that all kind of pushed that envelope out 20 years. What is the traffic volume when all of this property is developed? This is designed to handle that traffic as a truck route that Megan mentioned earlier. So on this particular cross-section, you'll see that there's the northbound, southbound, and center lane, center turn lane.
Sure.
But within that, there's also going to be turn lanes that go in and out of each one of the, well, it maps not up, but each one of the lots, of the four lots that we have, there will be turn lanes in addition to seeing this.
Okay. And I definitely understand. I just want to make sure that as this gets bigger, because again, this is an anomaly area from Larkspur down to Monument, putting in that USB hub or the postal service hub that's down here off of Baptist, that's going to be in the Falcon Commerce, we're snowstorming Colorado, it's due to happen at any time, northbound I-25 blocks down. So now we're pushing traffic through Old Denver Highway. That's my concern. Now, those individuals that have those medium, high-density area housing, as well as those individuals that are located there to the west of Old Denver Highway, now there are going to be the impact portion of that traffic. And again, my concern is just the longevity of that. What is the plan and has it been considered? I would ask for consideration and actually look at that standoff, possibly make it even bigger to allow for that, just in case it has to be bigger. Because at some point, potentially with that truck route down to the south in Baptist, there's going to be some issues.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, this is where our worlds are colliding, Mike. It wouldn't matter how wide they make this stretch through their property because the Town of Monument only has so much right-of-way on the other two ends. As Mike said, a lot of back and forth with Tri-View because they are in the, in Tri-View's district, and Tri-View has had their engineer do a full study of all of Old Denver Road from the Baptist Road roundabout all the way up to Second Street, and what the need will be for the amount of traffic and how to handle that within the amount of right-of-way that we have. I'm answering it more and more global, and you can kind of needle down into your piece. So they did that study for us, and the best we're going to be able to do is basically what you're seeing that, that the Canexus developer is doing. I think we have 120 feet of right-of-way on the other ends of Old Denver Road. We're only going to get two travel lanes in a center, two travel lanes, a center turn lane, maybe some other additional turning lanes, but there's not enough room for two lanes of travel both ways. But the traffic studies right now are saying, through 2040, we don't need that.
Okay.
But the town needs to work, again, with all of the developers in the area, some of the developers further south, as well as we are looking for grant money, because there is some responsibility that the town has for improvements to Old Denver Road outside of the scope of this Canexus project. I don't know how it all gets done in the, in the long term. We have some time, based on those traffic projections. But we've got some constraints there with what the ultimate design will look like.
Okay. And I just want to make that for the record, just as long as we're looking at it for the future, obviously for those individuals to the west of Old Denver Highway, and again, with that expansion of that roadway itself, with the trucking industries that's out there, just a consideration.
So two comments.
Yes, sir.
One to expand on Megan's comments. And then the other one goes back to something she said earlier, as Old Denver Road being a designated truck route, and the town is moving forward to analyze other streets as truck routes through Willow Springs, off of Mitchell, other stuff going on. Early, early on, when we started the conceptual designs of the Canexus project, we met with staff, met with city manager, and really, the town's vision at that point was a four-lane road, divided median, raised landscape, the whole works, sidewalk both sides, bike lanes, Taj Mahal of a major thoroughfare coming on Old Denver Road. Unfortunately, there's not the right-of-way there to do it. So you back up to an existing neighborhood, so you can't encroach into that on the west side. So we've kind of addressed that by moving it away from the neighborhood. But in addition to that, along from Second down to where we tie in with the new alignment and then jump south of that, then there's not enough room to widen the road any more than three lanes due to the Santa Fe Trail. The county owns, with the trail, there's a 50-foot right-of-way that the county owns, and they're very protective of that. And I don't see them giving up any of that for right-of-way. So I think that the big answer, the, the long-term answer to your question is the additional truck routes.
And again, just wanted to get that for the record, for those individuals that are the west of I-25, because again, that's going to be the concern as those traffic, or as that traffic starts going north and south. So that's really the main reason why I wanted to ask that question. Second question I have for you, those medium and high-density properties that are there, are these, are they parking lots? Are they apartment-type buildings? Or are they houses or locations that have garages where the cars are in those facilities? Is that?
So. There's my clicker. So the mustard-colored area.
Yep.
Which is the medium-density residential.
Yes, sir.
Will all have garages.
Perfect.
Okay. Whether those are townhomes, single-family detached that, that are more dense.
Yes, sir.
All of those have individual garages.
Perfect.
The brown area, which is the high-density or apartment-type use, those are parking lots and internal garages.
Perfect.
We'll have to get to final, final PUD to see that detail.
And the second part of that question is always going to be crime. Currently, crime, obviously, on Jackson Creek Parkway, whenever in, in that location, the apartments that are there, it is crime-ridden due to the fact of I-25. You have I-25 in Baptist and I-25 in 105. Obviously, there's an abundance of crime that's still going on in El Paso County on that thoroughfare on I-25. My concern is, again, just what is going to be there and how is that going to affect our already limited police force within our area here in Monument? So again, that's again, a consideration. I'm not saying it's wrong or right, but always good to know, and again, that the public knows exactly what's going in that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
For, well, to kind of address the question or, you know, the comments about the trucks, I think one of the things that you might want to consider when you're looking at your final plan and you're talking to your traffic people, all you have to do is put in a light. If you put in a light, the only reason why a truck would turn right out of there and try to go north and get onto the freeway that way is because it's easier to turn right. Put a light, they'll turn left. Much easier to get onto the freeway if they were to head south. They can stop by the two truck stops that are down there. It's, they don't have to go around a roundabout to get onto the freeway. So like I said, the only thing that would, you wouldn't have to put a, you know, no-right turn sign for them if you just had a truck exit with a light so they could turn left.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other commissioners, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion? Would anyone like to propose a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Canexus Phases II and III Preliminary PUD Plan based on the findings that the Preliminary PUD Plan compiles with the review and approval criteria from the Town of Monument Municipal Code Section 18.03.450.D with the following condition. The final details of the new Santa Fe regional trail alignment and proposed crossings of Old Denver Road will be addressed with the final design of the Old Denver Road realignment, and we will be subject to the approval by El Paso County Community Services Department.
I second.
Commissioner Eric White.
Yes.
Commissioner Dango or.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much, the applicant. And again, thank you for all of your input and just. just coordination and work. It's very much appreciated, and thank you to the citizens who put their hard work and input into this project. And Mr. King, I apologize for keeping you hard and fast to that three-minute rule. I really thought there was going to be more comments. If I knew it was just going to be you, I would have just let it happen. Okay. But we're not done. We still have another item on the agenda, and of course, the applicant's free to go.
Chairman, you think we could take a five-minute break?
We're just going to take a quick five-minute break. We just have an administrative issue to deal with, so if you want to hang on, please do. We'll be back on the record in a second. We're just going to take a quick five-minute break. We just have an administrative issue to deal with, so if you want to hang on, please do. All right, we are back from our brief recess. Sorry for everyone for having to take that, but I think it was necessary, and we'll just move on to item number two, the enclave annexation and zoning of Limbach Park. And I will turn to staff.
Yes, good evening. This is for the annexation and zoning in the Town of Monuments Limbach Park. This is an enclave, which is an unincorporated area of land entirely contained within the outer boundaries of the annexing municipality. The requirement is unincorporated area has been entirely contained within the boundaries of a municipality for at least three years. Town of Monument may annex a property by ordinance. In 2005, Union Pacific Railroad Company deeded 1.48 acres to the Town of Monument. The 1.4 acres is within unincorporated El Paso County, which was never annexed into the town in 2005. The goal of this annexation is to make the town's zoning map cohesive. The area in blue is the 1.48 acres to be annexed into town. The area in red is the .83 acres, which is currently in the town. The current zoning designation for this section of Limbach Park, the 1.48 acres, is an unknown zoning designation. The town proposes to rezone this area, to zone this area as public. And the reason we chose the Public Zone District is defined as property devoted to public and quasi-public buildings and facilities such as a town park. In conclusion, town staff recommends approval of the annexation and establishment of zoning for the Town of Monuments Limbach Park, based on the staff report findings, the town code, and pursuant to Article II, Section 30 of the Colorado Constitution, and Section 3112-106, and Colorado Revised Statute as amended. Therefore, the following affirmation motion is recommended. Staff recommends approval of the annexation and zoning to public, P, of the Limbach Park enclave, based on the findings that the annexation is in conformance with Article II, Section 30 of the Colorado Constitution, and Section 3112-106, and Section 1803.140.D. of the town's land development code.
I'm just going to add on here, I see some inquisitive, I see some inquisitive faces in the audience, like, what are you doing? You know, when you're new at something, and you ask too many questions, and then you uncover, or you don't uncover some information that you need? We just can't find, we can't find proof of annexation after the town. We got the GOCO grant, we got a GOCO grant in '05, had some match funds. Union Pacific gives us this strip of property in '05 to be added to Limbach Park. You know, as we're going through, looking at different annexations, and we're going through the data, we just can't find an annexation map, we can't find any reference to annexation. It's more as if we're just, planning staff's just not sure. And being that we're just not sure, because we don't find the annexation information, we think, let's just take the strip and the deed that was deeded to the town for the Union Pacific Railroad property. Let's go through this process. It's pretty simple. It can be done by ordinance, because it's municipally-owned land. Zone it P. Now we have the record, we're going to make sure it gets recorded with El Paso County Clerk and Recorder. It will be on file, so if in the future, anybody tries to look for that document, the one document that we can't find, the future Planning Department, the future Planning Commission will find it. It will be recorded. And that's really kind of the gist of it. The town's always thought it was just in the town, and the town definitely owns it. But there's just a, there's just a lack of information for me, and we're just going to hedge our bets and go through the annexation process.
Thank you for that clarification. With that, I'll just open any public comments, first to the audience. All right, seeing none, anyone online?
There are no hands online.
All right, we'll just wait a moment. For anyone online with any feedback or comments that they would like to make now, please raise your hand. Give it a few more moments. All right, I'll turn right back to staff. Teresa, anyone online? Okay, thank you very much. All right, and I assume the same with the telephone connection. No hands are raised?
Correct. Correct.
All right, thank you very much for confirming. With that, I will close the public comments section, and just move, or at least look to the commissioners for any questions or comments that they'd like to add at this time. Yes, please, Kath.
Well, I might shed a little bit of light on this, because I signed the papers when it was deeded to the town, and we bought it with a GOCO grant, and all of us believed it to be part of the town. And I believe that it wasn't, but that was our belief, so we didn't attempt to annex.
I think this just covers them, just in case.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for the history on that. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve by any of the commissioners. Oh, hold on.
Chairman, I know you closed the public hearing portion. I didn't, we didn't notice this, but there is a hand that may have popped up late. Are you willing to take the comment?
Yes. For the hand that just raised, please patch through, and for the person speaking, please state your name and address. And again, we'll just limit comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Jeremy, that's you. You have your hand up. Jeremy Ferrante. You're still on mute, Jeremy? You could maybe hit star six to unmute yourself?
No, he's on, he's on.
Maybe he hit the wrong button.
I see him.
Let's give him a minute.
Mr. Ferrante, if, I don't know, unmute? There we go. Wait, something just changed. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you, just so you know.
We'll move Jeremy up into presenters to see if he can unmute himself.
I apologize for that. I just wanted to make sure that if he had a hand up.
If here's Mr. Ferrante left, that's fine. So I will again look to my fellow commissioners to move on a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the annexation and zoning to P, public, of Limbach Park enclave, based on the finding that the annexation is in conformance with Article II, Section 30 of the Colorado Constitution, and Section 31-12-106 C.R.S., and that the zoning is consistent with the evaluation criteria of the Land Development Code, Section 18.03.140.D.
Commissioner Daniel O'Wors.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Chairman Chris Wehelme.
Yes.
This has been approved 7-0.
All right, so we'll now move to the reports, communications, and announcements sections. Any reports, communications, or announcements from the commissioners? Going twice? Yes. I do want to announce to my fellow commissioners that I will be moving outside the boundary of Monument in the coming month, and as such, I will no longer be qualified to serve on this board. So I guess I have a question to staff. I won't formally sell my house. The closing date is March 11th, so am I still qualified then to participate in the March Planning Commission on the 9th, I believe?
So, don't kill me, because last we spoke, we were thinking end of February, and somehow I managed to move extremely quick.
That's quite all right.
And we're able to appoint another member as of the 1st of March to take over that term.
Okay.
And we did that just two days ago, on Monday, to appoint Kathy Green and Sean Zernico as regular to move into the two seats that did not want to be filled, and then Tony Peck as an alternate, we still do need an alternate, and then Mr. Ray Egley, who was on the Board of Adjustments, to take over your seat.
Position. Okay, that's quite all right, because I was expecting to be closed on the house by the end of February, so let me amend my announcement. This, this is my last meeting on the Town of Monument Planning Commission. It has been an honor to serve with all of you. I have enjoyed it immensely, and I am very sorrowful in having to depart. There's my announcement. I'll just add, Commissioner White, you've been a huge asset to this Planning Commission. Your knowledge, your questions, and your insight are extremely valuable, and they will be missed. So thank you for everything that you've done. I am sorely saddened that you will be gone, and I'm going to look to a way to sell you a slice of my backyard, so that you can maintain your ownership here at an affordable rate.
File a subdivision plan.
There you go. My Board of Adjustment will be coming soon. But no, thank you, Commissioner White. I mean, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you. All right, so any other announcements from staff?
Yeah, I do have a couple things. Commissioner White, thank you so much for being such a wonderful commission member. I feel like a big old jerk now that I moved so swiftly, right? I'm patting myself on the back, like, look how quick I did this, and then you just said that. I'm like, oh, gosh. I'm so sorry. With that, you need to think about who is going to be a replacement for a vice chair, and at the meeting in March, we will have for you, there's only a few, there's only two that are qualified, because you have to be, having been sat on the board for a year. So I think that's Danny and Martin. Yeah, so it's Danny O'Wors and Martin Trujillo. You two gentlemen are the only two that qualify for vice chairman. So in March, we need to appoint a vice, a vice chairman. We will also need an appointee from the Planning Commission to the Board of Adjustments, because I believe Commissioner White was the appointed Planning Commission member to sit on the Board of Adjustments, whether you know that or not, because we haven't had a Board of Adjustments meeting in years and years. But formally, we do need to appoint a Planning Commission member to sit on the Board of Adjustments. That could be your new commissioner, but we will need to deal with that in March as well. And then, just an update on the Quick Trip that you heard last month was approved by the Board of Trustees on Monday, and that's when the conversation about the signalization... the Board of Trustees on Monday, and that's when the conversation about the signalization at Torazo came up. When we brought it forward to you, it came up with a condition that no certificate of occupancy be issued until the signal was installed. While when, when we got to Board of Trustees, we had to change that. CDOT has, and this is where the conversation comes up, CDOT said, as the comments on the Quick Trip and the traffic study, the warrants are met for the signal at Torazo, and, and the funding is there because the developer Falcon Commerce Center put an escrow for the signal. However, it's not with the opening of the store, that CDOT actually wants to see physical trips on the road before they will start the process of installation of the signal. When the store opens, it won't meet warrants. At some point after the store opens, it is expected to meet warrants. They will not install a signal before warrants are met. They said there's traffic issues, it causes safety problems, there's been lawsuits based on an installation of signals before warrants, all very technical. That's why the Board of Trustees had a lot of questions, because there's, you know, traffic is perceived to be very bad, dangerous, whatever's happening down there. CDOT will come on March 7th, the Region Two Traffic Engineering Manager will be at the Board of Trustees to explain, and have the opportunity for the trustees to answer questions, explain their warrant process, why they won't just install the signal, you know, that sounds so easy, the money's there, install the signal. Not that simple, better for them to explain it. And so the board did approve it with the removal of that condition based on this conversation that staff brought up. We just didn't realize what CDOT was saying was, oh, no, well, the, CDOT will do traffic counts in the future, and is expected to trip that warrant, but it won't happen before certificate of occupancy. Also on Monday, the trustees gave additional time to talk about industrial design standards. They want staff to report back to them on March 7th. We're going to try to bring that back to you on March 9th, waiting for additional comments from industrial property owners. We've received some comments from citizens, I think there's a want to have another meeting. We had a meeting with owners and citizens, we want to have another meeting, hopefully before March 7th, to kind of talk about changes. I'll report out to the Board of Trustees on the 7th. Chances are fairly good that you may see that on March 9th, but we're moving forward as fast as we can. So just wanted to give you those couple updates. Debbie, did, did I miss anything? Okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, staff. And Dan?
Comment?
Yeah.
Concerning the vice chair job, I may or may not be here on 9th, my plane doesn't land in Denver until 2:45, so, with the way, so I may or may not be here on the 9th. But if I were here on the 9th, and if I were nominated, I would look at my friend and say, will you please take the job? I tell you what, I, I served as vice chair once, I served as chair, and during the chair, you know, I used to, I used to be in charge of all kinds of meetings with people, and I did real well. But being a chair of the Planning Commission requires somebody that has finesse better than mine, and therefore, I would have graciously turned it down had I've been here, provided my friend would say, well, I'm not taking it either, then we would, we would have worked that out. So I just wanted to make that statement known in case I'm not here. I didn't show up because I didn't...
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Wors. All right, and with that, I will adjourn.